Good evening, it's 6:30. We have a forum called Planning Board Meeting to order. And as we mentioned, a couple of meetings have probably already have done at once. Our planning board meeting will now start at 6:30. And to be consistent with everybody else and maybe get out of here a little bit earlier instead of having some of our late nights. First up for general information is Chris Zouki.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we're from Tandem Bagel in East Hampton. We're looking to lease this old Sears place on 191 Russell Road.
The old what?
The Sears.
Sears. Oh, oh Sears, oh, okay.
Sorry.
You pointed that way, Sears is that way.
Oh, I don't know.
Who were you with again?
Tandem Bagel.
Tandem Bagel. I've got a little packet for you guys.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Tandem Bagel.
What's that?
Most of us, I'm sure, are familiar with Tandem Bagel.
I don't know if you're familiar.
Yeah.
If you are, this is a little about us.
You know the place, you both have that one at Club?
Yeah, the club and one in East Hampton. We started in East Hampton and then...
Which is a nice spot, yeah.
So, we're looking at the 191 Russell, that way, sorry. And redoing it for a cafe in front and consolidating our baking in back. So it's about 8,000 square feet. We currently have baking happening in East Hampton and in Amherst. We have a little wholesale bakery in Amherst. We want to consolidate with our bagels. So we're trying to consolidate the two in the back of this space. Rebuild it out, clean that up for a small bakery and then have a cafe in front.
Okay.
There's pictures, they're pretty preliminary, but it's going to be what was on the building before. There'll be one on the street on the current street sign and then probably just a logo on the front of the building where the Sears logo was.
Okay. So how do we clean it, is it completely out of there?
Yeah, it's a laundromat now. I don't know where that zephyr rug is, I've never seen it here.
Is that the rug used to be?
Was it on the corner?
It was someplace else before.
They're in like North Hampton or Amherst now, aren't they?
I've heard the name, they were someplace else locally, I forgot where they were, I can't remember.
So, there's a laundromat in the back. We're going to get the top space on the street sign because we have most of the building and then we'll have that one, a logo on the front of the building.
Is that yoga studio still there?
It's still there, yes. It has the first three spaces.
Exterior alterations? Exterior elimination signs?
There's currently on the front of the building, there's a couple of spotlights on the laundry mat high, we'll leave that there. I don't believe the street sign has lights, the one on the road. I think may.
I think it had a little, I think it would, yeah, I don't know what it had.
We won't be changing anything there. And the only thing on the exterior is there's a garage door in back that we moved. But we're not changing the structure of the building at all.
Yes, that's okay. So you're bringing in 1,000 gallon propane? Or is it there already?
Yeah, we'll be bringing one in.
You have to go to the fire chief for that. Going to be underground or above?
So, they've already gone to that and got a permit for one tank for the laundromat. He put a pad that can fit two so that we have space. They've already put the pipe in, it's already been checked and approved. So that's, we'll have to go get our permit for that.
That's outside of our grid, that's what you're telling me, let's make sure you go to the fire chief for that.
Yep, so it's set up for it, we just haven't gone, we just got the lease and we're just down the road to where it's from here first.
And the Board of Health, you'll probably have to go to them, they meet...
They're downstairs at 7, yeah.
Right, yeah.
We were going to stop there.
You're permitted use of the permitted zone? No exterior alterations? No exterior, I mean, do we even need a motion?
I don't think so. You're free to vote.
Why don't you make one, just to make sure that he discovered the basis.
Kind of what we wanted to do, make sure everybody knows.
Well, the key is you've got to have smoked salmon cream cheese.
We have that. We have it.
I'll make a motion to confirm that this isn't allowed use, the bakery cafe isn't allowed use in the zone.
Motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Wow, this is your address you're going to have?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure, we have a simple form I'll give to the building inspector. And I'll put it in his mail box, please.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
They are going to. They, that's one of the reasons for going here, that the, they want to expand their baking capacity. And the East Hampton facility is capped out. Got a drive through, I mean, he must loop around the back. Okay, I don't have that piece. I think we should get him back then because that is...
Want to go get him?
Yeah, yeah.
Where are they downstairs?
Board of Health, yes. I don't see it as a problem, but, well, they said no exterior alterations. Well, they said they're moving a garage door, but that's the one back here at the receiving dock, they're moving it from the front to the back.
Yeah, what's the traffic flow going to be? Looks like it dead ends.
Oh, he just runs out of, he's given a little bit of site information on the floor plan, so we should probably see a site plan.
So, questions?
Yes, are you going to have a drive-up window?
It's going to be like, we're kind of foregoing the drive-up ordering. We actually have been doing, we've got a new POS system that does online ordering. So we're planning on just doing a pickup window to just drive up, all the orders are done.
Okay, what's the traffic pattern going to be? Because you only show, well, then you've got outside seating.
There's sidewalks there.
But you have outside seating.
Yes.
Okay, this is different, you didn't explain all that to us.
Sorry.
Okay, that makes a whole different scenario.
Okay, what do you need to know?
Your waiver is withdrawn.
Okay.
Because we need to know what the parking problem, we need to know parking for the whole site.
Okay.
We ran into this with Esalen up the road.
Okay.
They put outside seating in and didn't provide adequate parking and now they're parking all over the town common and everybody else.
Okay.
So, we need to see the site with the parking to make sure you have adequate parking for what you're going to do.
Okay.
So, the seating area is existing, it's the existing...
No, 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 there's not a seating area, that was a...
No, no, I'm just saying, it's a pad now that was, that is currently there.
It was a display area before for tractors and equipment, that's fine. We're not questioning that it's there, we're questioning that it's additional...
The purpose of it.
No, no, we're questioning that it's additional people visiting the facility.
Oh, I see.
Additional parking required because you've got right here four tables, you could probably fit a few extra.
Yeah, understand.
And we want to make sure this area now needs to be considered into the overall parking of two for one to make sure there's adequate parking on the site because we ran into this once before, like, excuse me, I said with Esalen, they expanded the outside parking, did not have adequate parking on their site and they're parking all over the town common. If they don't have parking here, there's no place for parking for them to move. We don't want them parking in town streets, we don't want them parking on somebody else's property. You need to accommodate all parking on your site.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll need to see a site plan and a traffic flow for the drive-through window. Even though it's not, it's a pickup window, but what's the traffic pattern around and stuff like that to make sure it's okay?
Okay, understand.
Okay, you come back in two weeks, I mean, for the most part, what we approved doesn't include those things.
Got it, understand.
So you can move, you could start your work in, but come back with the drive-through and everything else to make sure you have adequate.
Understand.
I think you do?
Yeah.
But we want to see it on paper to verify.
The lot is pretty big, so...
So, the bylaw talks about two square feet of parking for each square foot of business floor area, which is what captures the outer space as well as what's inside the four walls.
Two square feet of...
Two square feet of parking for each square foot of business floor area.
Okay, including the outside seating.
Including the outside seating. It's defined to include anything related to your purpose.
Okay.
So, for example, at the Sam's Outdoor Outfitters, the kayak corral they have attached to the building is counted as part of their business floor area.
Okay, would we count the entire cafe and the bakery?
Yes, that's all your business.
It's all your business, your entire business area, the entire building area.
Okay, so we'll run the numbers and see where we're at with that.
Okay, because you need to include also the area of the rest of the stores on the site.
For the building itself.
Not just yours, but that whole building, the whole square footage of the entire building and the patio area to make sure that you have enough parking.
So, that area, that space was originally one lot, it was divided into two lots, so each lot is supposed to support its own parking for its building. And I think that we went through that when we originally did site plan approval before the Sears actually went in. So, again, I don't think it's a problem. The one area that may affect it when we're counting square footage, we don't count parking spaces per se, we, in square footage, we incorporate the parking stalls, the line spaces plus the backing area, but we don't count throughways. So, the driveway right around the mall, for example, does not count as parking for the mall. You're taking some of that formerly still space and making it into a throughway.
A walkway, a throughway, yeah.
With the drive-up, drive for, pickup window. So, that is one thing we hadn't looked at previously.
Yeah, yeah, understand, that's fine, that's fine, but now we're setting it down.
Okay, so I'll make a formal motion to withdraw approval, need more parking information.
Okay. Okay, we need to vote on it?
Sure.
Okay.
Withdrawn, okay. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Parked part.
Okay.
Should we stay?
Well, you can still vote, Ken, that, you know, we're in favor of the overall thing, I don't think we're going to be against this, we just want to see everything on paper.
On paper about parking, understand, that's fine. You know, that's good, that's fair, no problem. Understand, glad you caught us before we left.
Oh, your copy sets came up one short, I did not get the floor plan. Mark had...
You good?
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
There will be one more person coming in, they had called me, and then we'll talk about that at the end.
Okay.
But they were aware that this was meeting time, we'll just have to wait until we do get here. How's MS4 coming along with Patty, slowly?
Slowly but surely, I think we, in getting an update from Patty in regards to the following meeting on the 4th, that should be the last meeting.
Oh, really?
And then we can figure out as far as timeline how we move from there, but as far as...
Have you heard anything from Joel on anything in the shape?
I have not.
I'm going to email him, I'll email Joel, see if he responds to me, saying that we want to basically amend the zoning bylaw to reference the general bylaw.
How do we do that? Okay, yeah, I had specifically asked him about that authority question and who would be the enforcement authority.
The way we're rewriting the general bylaw is there, the planning board will have overall overseer authority, but there are specific sections where planning board, Board of Health, Conservation and EPW are going to have out of it depending what's going on. So, that's pretty, actually pretty straightforward. So, when is, you said September 4th is that meeting?
So that is going to be our, I think, our last working group unless something comes up that day, but in speaking with Patty, it seemed as if we were nearing the end.
Right.
Based on our previous working group meetings during the month of July. So, we'll assess on that, the 4th, and go from there.
So, and when is town meeting?
Right now, I think it's the, John?
Town meeting, 24th?
October 15th?
I think it's October, let's see if I have it in here.
It is the 24th, right?
That's right.
I think.
I think it's special time meeting the 24th.
You're right.
Okay. So just enjoining articles to do on 10 to 11, something like that. Do I mean all articles, we can reserve?
We can book a places, yeah.
So, just logistically, if, we've been meeting usually at the first Tuesday of the month on planning, but you won't have the complete product for the 3rd, so would it, that make more sense to meet on the 24th? No, 17th, I'm sorry.
Oh, with Ken?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I imagine, assuming that we're able to complete the product and maybe, I think it would be clear with, you know, council chiming in. But it would be a rescission of the zoning bylaw and then adoption of a general bylaw. So I guess, you know, if that requires a public hearing, and I'm not, I mean, it would because it's affecting the zoning bylaw.
Well, we'll modify, we'll be amending the zoning bylaws, so definitely be a public hearing.
Right. Does then, would the public hearing then be scheduled for that October 1st October meeting? And do you have enough time?
We could schedule, we could schedule the public hearing on the 15th of October, which is over, which is a week before the town meeting.
Okay.
That'd be a regular planning board meeting date. So, yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay.
I mean, if the worst comes to worst, we can do it on the 22nd or just have a special meeting or something like that, so it takes...
Okay.
We'll have time for that.
So, I think that in regards to the MS4, and I don't know, Jim, you've been providing any updates at the last meeting?
Just briefly, what was going on and stuff like that.
So, I mean, we're still continuing to go through that. Patty and I actually came out here last week at the invitation of Janus Stone because, yes, Conservation Commission, because there was a DEP presentation here for some of the conservation agents and commission members in regards to the MS4. And it's how it doesn't quite align with the Wetlands Protection Act. And so, we're going to, and that might be a conversation that comes up at the next meeting, Jim, in regards to the standards that need to be met. Because it seems as if the DEP is still trying to engage with EPA in regards to saying if these standards are met, then it's also compliant with the Wetlands Protection Act rather than having these two kind of related permits in regards to stormwater. Be, you know, it would be hard for the administration of it. So, that, I mean, it was insightful, definitely, but I think that there is still some conversation that's happening between the EPA and DEP in regards to that. But I guess we'll see. The permits are supposed to be completed or the bylaw amendments are supposed to be completed by next July, July 1st is when the MS4 permit takes, you know, is in place. So, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll see and just continue to monitor that. So the other project that I've been working with the board on, and this is kind of the discussion in regards to the definitions section. So what I did is you have two products here and I pulled out in what, in the handout that's called zoning related terms definition, pulled from the Hadley zoning bylaw, that's specific to all of your special regulations that have definition sections. And I pulled them out and provided some notes using, that's in relation to the other handout, which is general, like a general definitions section that could be found in the zoning bylaw. And so there are a couple of comments to go through. I know that I handed this out today, so obviously you didn't review it, but I think in general, understanding that you seem to be open to the idea of clumping related bylaws together within a definition section of the bylaws, so creating a new definition section. And so what I imagine is that if we go through your special regulations terms and then, and then integrate it into a template, which is what this other document is, that it could be sufficient for the purposes of adding a definition section. I went through the template version and removed items that are not in your bylaw at all. There are some, there is some overlap and where there is, I did provide some comments in regards to whether or not you would want to use your definition or the definition that is in the template. For instance, the bed and breakfast definition, you have a whole section on bed and breakfast regulation and you have a definition within that section for hotels and motels. This definition that's in the template version also has, it has a different definition for hotels and motels. And I guess in context, and you know your bylaw better, could you see a hotel and motel being pulled out of the bed and breakfast kind of being applicable to other hotel and motel uses that are, what's allowed as far as uses in your zoning districts? So that's kind of generally where the questions kind of lie.
A little bit of history on some of these topics. There were several bylaws that were adopted, amended, whatever word you want to call in the course of a few short years. And between Joe and Bill and myself, we were each on individual committees on this particular bylaw. And some of the definitions that particularly, bed and breakfast, Bill championed that section.
Mm-hmm.
Home occupations, I championed. And Joe had some other ones he was champion, championing them. So, we probably can give you those answers to a lot of it. And especially with the hotel, that was put in there to define within bed and breakfast or that somebody wasn't going to try to put a hotel into it, obviously.
Right.
So I guess the answer, you know, Bill might get it to explain whether he thinks it would be appropriate to try and do that.
Yeah, no, that's, you're exactly right, it was in there, it was sort of a belt and suspenders, a private occupied owner operated house, et cetera, and which is not a hotel.
Okay.
So, the purpose of bed and breakfast wasn't to define hotels and motels.
Right.
Except as...
But it wasn't.
Yeah.
Upper limit.
It was just to exclude them specifically. So, I'm sure that'd be fine to have...
But I think what I appreciate from the definitions that you've established for the bed and breakfast section and my comment in the template version is that maybe use the citation of MGL that you use, which is chapter 140, section 6. I think the overlap, I think the definition is comparable, but maybe like adding, you know, the MGL citation that's listed in your bylaw. Wherever I can use MGL, I think is appropriate for the zoning bylaw. I think, so that was just kind of, and what I imagine is that maybe at the following meeting or if, you know, individual members want to email me in regards to the comments that I've posed here or the questions that I've posed, I don't know if it's a productive use of time to go through each one at this moment. But, you know, it's, it's general questions on whether or not maybe items can be pulled altogether for a definition that does overlap between the two documents if one is preferable. You know, I think there is something that I had a question about specific to dwellings. You define housing as a, in the senior housing section of the bylaw. I don't know if, I know that there are some uses in your zoning bylaw dependent on where in the, which zoning district those types of uses are allowed. I think you had single family, multi, single family, two family, three family. With that said, I know there was one definition, and if you look at the template version that I sent, there's a triplex use and multifamily use that you have in your bylaw. Multifamily in one section, 8.2.1 of your bylaw has structure with more than three or more dwelling units. And in 24.3.1.1, multifamily has four or more dwelling units. So, I think just...
That just applies to the...
So is that just applicable to senior?
Correct.
To senior housing?
Right.
So maybe then, I guess that...
Because we're, we're one dwelling per lot.
Yeah.
And that's been kind of from day one of the zoning concept.
Mm-hmm.
Primarily not to have apartments.
True.
There are apartments in town, but they're the 40B housing, the ZBA.
Yeah.
Overruled.
Okay.
So, one dwelling per lot is kind of traditional and it's been in for a long time and... There is always some movement afoot that people want to get apartments in, but apartments need sewer and sewer infrastructure needs updating, we don't need new sewer lines coming in, so it's a...
So then maybe it's, it's not worthwhile to define what a dwelling unit is for the purposes of, of understanding that the dwelling units in regards to increasing density would be applicable only to senior housing.
No, we don't, I personally don't think, we'd like to muddy the waters, there is, like the first paragraph, one dwelling per lot.
Okay.
That is, that's it. And trailers, there was a tiny house movement that came in, was that a dwelling, was that a trailer? It was a trailer. And, but that eventually failed. And, but that eventually failed.
So I, I would agree with you. I think it probably makes sense for us not to, we have in the past gone through these line by line, but I think that we probably should read them first before we...
What are, what are you trying to accomplish? Talking, what are you trying to accomplish? Simplify something?
So usually definitions, because, you know, in going through this, you have 12 pages of definitions that are in individual sections.
Yeah.
So the, the model that I had given you was a model that other towns have used, and my previous position, we established this as a model where we would keep related uses that are covered under special regulations, like adult uses, solar, marijuana, and they get like special treatment in a definition section. So basically, it's a compilation of all the definitions of, of your special regulations in addition to just doing a quick survey of this template version of items that you may have wanted to define before, but haven't done, or don't, and, and so I just kind of...
Can you move all these definitions around without changing the intent of the original definition?
Oh, yeah. No, definitely.
Well, let's take one, for example, roof height. That's in here, is it?
Yes.
Building height.
Hello?
Building height, yeah.
So these, I believe?
Building height, oh, yeah, that's in the template, so this is...
This is in the template, you don't have building height.
We don't.
Yeah.
There was a, there was not defined. Actually, one of the things that we wanted to do was start defining certain things.
Yes, correct.
So, I mean, I think the, the thing that I did here was, these are probably typical definitions related to building and structures, streets, how it's defined. And so those are kind of left there, and it sounds...
Sorry about that. I walked out after I asked a question.
You're gonna have to remind me, though. I, I think what we were saying was that...
Or is it a stupid question?
No, it's not, because you don't have a definition section. The definitions that do exist are particular to the special regulations that were established. And so I know, and in, you know, working with some planning boards, they're like, oh, man, I wish we defined that because we had this issue. And so what I've taken is this template that I've used. And these are general terms specific to buildings, streets, structures, and then you have your versions which would get incorporated into this definition section. So then you would, you would, basically, your motion at a future town meeting would be to remove all the definition sections from this, 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 and this, and create a new definition section.
People that were just in, and they want to have an outdoor seating area where there is cemented in, and they call it the echelon loophole closed.
Yeah.
And it definitely indicates that outdoor patio areas, et cetera, et cetera. So we don't want to be in, in conflict with that definition of our bylaw, so we would have to look more closely at that. That's what you're getting at, to go over it.
Right. And, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I sent this to the board this morning, but I imagine over time, and for a meeting next, you would have had a chance to look at it, provide a comment. I, you know, I, I did do a survey in regards to looking at your bylaw. I removed items that were in this template that are not in your bylaw, and then offer some comments in those other sections, whether or not, you know, you may want to introduce something.
Well, it's fresh in our mind. I mean, we all had a, a kind of a, our version of what the height of the building is, and obviously the people who were building it were talking about the mean, which is what this standard, this template.
Correct.
The template has the mean in there, but I'd like to keep it simple. In other words, the top of the roof pitch is the height of the building.
Yeah.
And so are the building inspector, by the way, I talked to him about that. He says that he was in favor of using the highest point of the roof. For the peak of the roof.
How do you figure out the mean? I mean, nobody could figure it out.
Well, yeah, you can. If you took geometry, you can figure it out.
You can figure it out. The problem is, it's not something that you can look at the picture and say, it's here. It takes some, it takes, it takes geometry and trigonometry to do that.
My whole point about Pennsyl Place, it's a trapezoidal building, once you get up high, and it kind of goes like this. So is the height up here, or is it the mean here?
So, well, they have that.
It's usually considered as the top.
Yeah, so anyway, considered, yeah. So we just want to go to the highest point of the roof.
Which I think is fair, because talking about flat roofs versus peaked roof, a peaked roof building can be larger than a flat roof building.
Right.
So, yeah, for the flat roof, I believe the way we want to use on a flat roof, it would be, typically there's a parapet around any flat roofs.
It's generally the highest point.
Yeah, why I'd shake it is that that's...
What's that?
Yeah, there's usually a parapet which would be higher than a flat roof.
Right.
Generally.
So would you, would you use the height of the, of the flat roof, or would you use the height of the parapet?
Well, yeah, in that case, the roof is actually lower than the building, so you would use the highest point. And I, and we'll probably want to put in some definition about roof appurtenances or something, you know, if you have a...
That's already in there.
Right. Because if they're over a certain size, I mean, I don't know.
Well, we, we don't include like cupolas and decorative features on a roof. Is any private, is any of part of the height?
Okay. So if I was gonna build a church, would this be my roof height, or would the steeple be my, you know?
The...
This.
This would be.
This would be a point.
So that raises another question, though, the, in the village center overlay, we require a peaked roof.
Correct.
And we have a height limitation and a stories limitation. And if I were to believe the representations that were made for the hotel, you can't have three stories and a peaked roof within the height limit.
Without any very low slope, which would need a...
Well, you can't. Don't forget, they have, they have 10 and 12-foot heights in their stories.
Yes.
So if you, it is possible, depending on how high the stories are inside.
Okay. I don't want to create a situation where the bylaw prohibits what we're telling people to do.
Yeah.
So that the geometry may need some...
Right.
Yeah.
The...
Through there.
So I would say on a, on a flat roof, would they have a parapet around? It would be the height of the flat roof, because typically a parapet is usually used there as a fall measure, fall protection, and a little protection of the roof. It also typically less than three to four feet high.
The template is usually the...
In general, for example, the library at UMass, you know, you've got, there, the parapet is, you know, 18 feet, because it's trying to hide the cooling towers which are on top.
Okay.
But I don't think anyone's gonna build that.
Well, yeah, we're not gonna have anything that high.
Well, with flat roofs and with those, I, my first office looked down on the extension of the courthouse. They had a flat roof, and they had drains in it. And in New England, those drains were always plugged up, and people were there, and it leaked all the time. So I think they did learn their lesson.
Yeah.
Flat roofs are not good for, well, to build a flat roof in New England, it can be done. If you got a large building, you have to do it. But they are very expensive to build a good flat roof. Well, if it's the lowest bidder.
But for commercial, it's handier, because you can put equipment up there that, that then frees up building space under the roof.
So anyways, on a very technical ground, what we had bounced around with back when Larry was sitting in your seat, was putting the definitions as in part one.
Okay.
Where we just have this purpose and definitions.
Yeah.
Purpose will be A, the definitions will be B. That way we don't have to renumber...
That makes sense.
Everything else. Or put it at the end, because people expect to see it.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen it right after the purpose, or at the end of the document. You know, the thing is, at the end, then are you gonna renumber every time that you add into a special regulation?
Right, yeah. Yes, yeah, I think Bill's ideas go to purpose and definitions.
I like the idea of it being 1B.
It's all right.
Then you pass over them before you get to the meat of the document.
Otherwise...
So that if you have questions, you know you can go back and get clarity. Whereas you might go, go ahead without checking that at the end, oh, that was defined back there.
I, I, getting to a question on a definition, on internally lit sign, the last, your second sentence, "This include what is not limited to signed with light sources behind semi, semi-translucent material or layered signs with light sources behind text characters." What does that mean?
I don't know, that's your bylaw.
It's, it's in our bylaw?
Yeah. So I, I literally just lifted everything that was in your signs section, so...
What would it be under, Jim? You've got under the sign accessory...
Sign and internally lit. Halfway down a page, on a front page. Oh, yeah, I got it, I'll get it.
So maybe it's like you're a white...
Layered sign with light sources behind text.
Would that be the, the letters standing out, as opposed to being flush with the sign standing out a bit?
Well, does that mean like, like that, we permit backlit signs, the fact we kind of like backlit signs because they're kind of subdued?
Right, but that's not translucent, I mean...
No, but it, but it's, what, my question is layered sign with light sources behind text. It is a white source behind a text. But what does the layered mean? Okay. Layered sign with light source, okay, it's right, it's right in there.
Yeah, semi-translucent material or layered. Yeah, I guess we'd have to explain that later.
Layered sign, layered sign.
See if Google has an answer.
With light source behind text characters.
True. Yeah, so that is, includes, including but not limited to, so that is reaching the type of signs that we've been talking about and are suggesting to people.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, is, that last sentence in that sign internally lit, any internally lit sign is considered a light emitting sign? So then, those are the signs that you don't like.
Well, maybe after we...
Well, after things like that.
We'll have that aha moment, I remember.
Right.
Remember why we put it in.
Okay. All right.
Well, that is my question, it's not part of our bylaw, we don't know what it means either.
But going back to the bigger picture, I think the template does work. I don't think, we may need to think about typographically, because we can't produce all this color.
Right.
But we can have insets below themes.
Yes. I guess then another question is whether or not you would want each definition numbered.
Each what?
Definition numbered.
No.
No.
I mean, there's a lot of definitions.
No, we don't want to number, because then if we change them, then it makes a mess. So we don't, I don't see a reason to number them.
Yeah, I mean, I know that in some sections of your bylaw, some definitions are numbered.
Okay. Only, that would only be if, if, yeah, again, we did not create everything from scratch.
No, I know. Yeah, and it, I mean, like solar, marijuana, I mean, the definitions are, the, these are the same definitions I've seen elsewhere, so...
Yes, they mostly come from PVPs.
Right.
So that was just a, a function of how, how those units were formatted.
Yeah.
So I don't think numbering is gonna help.
I think we put them in alphabetical order, and like when they're used, like the way you kind of got them in your template, when they're for a unique, unique section, like adult use, adult use established with adult use bookstore, adult use, adult use, or you with adult, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
So that it, it kind of signifies for that section, like, you know, whether marijuana, you call cannabis marijuana, whatever, whatever is, cannabis might be easier something because they've got a shorter word, less, less typing when you gotta copy it.
Yeah. I mean, I think as you mentioned, Bill, I think if you were to maybe bold or have adult uses, and then the clause, the following terms are associated with adult, adult uses, and then maybe indent...
Yeah.
Those specific terms.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they are, if they're in the related section, it's not, I mean, you have some that don't start with that word, so like substantial, significant portion is specific to the adult use bylaw.
Although maybe we would want to, while we're editing it anyway, add in, for instance, I happen to go get dwellings here, so you have dwelling, multifamily, dwelling, tags as a group home, but you could have dwelling, group home.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. And then have a comma, dwelling, group home.
Or a dash or something.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you have dwelling, comma, two families, so you could have dwelling, comma, group home.
Yeah, I...
And that would keep the consistency of...
In regards to the group home, I don't know if you have another term for that in your bylaw. I didn't find it, just using the find function.
Well, I definitely appreciate the effort you put into this. What we have, had been seeing in some prior samples were more sort of, why don't you use these definitions instead?
Oh, no, I...
So having, taking the time to pull ours and organize them is very helpful. And I think it will make the rest of the bylaw somewhat more manageable. We don't have this, as much verbiage at the beginning of each one.
Yeah. And, you know, I think something that would be helpful, too, is you have the related terms sentence, the following terms are associated with adult uses, you can also say, see section this, or, you know, or something.
Right.
General language like that.
I echo Bill's comment about making the definitions specific to ours own bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
So why did you, for instance, delete adult daycare in, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm in, I'm in the template, that's why you deleted it.
Yeah. I didn't delete anything in, in your special regulations.
Okay, okay.
I put a comment there if I felt, you know, if there was some...
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
So...
So the crossouts are, they don't appear in your bylaw, so I removed them from this template.
Okay.
Whether or not you want to discuss that further, and maybe introduce some related definition, you know, maybe you can...
Well, we can look at it.
You can look at that and, and, you know, make that comment.
I think for the time being, we need to walk, and we need to simply take the definitions we have, put in one section. This is gonna become a somewhat evergreen document for a while, because as we get further into this, we're gonna be doing, I hate to say it, a lot more defining for out of necessity, but we can always add more to it without a lot of pain. At least we have the definitions in one place, and those that aren't defined, or haven't defined, that we know we need, and it's gonna make the zoning enforcement officer very happy.
Yeah.
So soon as we get something that we can, why, could you have a copy of this?
I, I have the...
I sent the digital copy.
Oh, you just sent the copy, okay.
Next year, next year. So I'll forward it to, okay.
We ought to also bring up some of the controversial things. Five or more people living in a house. Is that enforceable or not enforceable?
It's really up to the building inspector. You know, when I was town planner, that was always something that came up.
What town, was it a Collis Town?
No, it was the town of Southbridge.
Okay.
Population of about 17,000, but the... But the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer and I, we ended up tag teaming. You know, my job as the town planner, I don't, I'm not a zoning enforcement officer, so I can tell, you know, the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, say, these need to go before the planning board, this needs to go before the ZBA. And he would always come to me in regards to, is, can this be defined this way? Based on, I know who lives there and they're not a family, something like that. You know, and it is, it is, it is his interpretation, or his, his or hers interpretation. I've offered family, I think, as a definition. And it's specific to, and that's in your template, that's specific to related by blood, marriage or adoption, or residing as a single integral housekeeping unit.
So you, it's the same problem, it's an evergreen problem in every town.
It's the enforcement issue, it's very difficult, I think.
So it's not a legal interpretation that's really.
I think we wanna be very careful about going into.
I, I agree.
You know, it's a slippery slope from, we don't want a unlicensed frat house to hire all these people living together. You know, we don't necessarily wanna go, we don't wanna know necessarily why people are choosing to live together.
And the other ones that came up, maybe Janice Stone alluded to this, the FEMA representative, well, actually, MIPA, the Massachusetts representative, was a little concerned that we allow trailers along the floodway.
I think I was at that meeting, the select board, joint select.
It was here, yeah.
That was mentioned, but there was another one specifically where someone from the state mass emergency management came out to do a periodic review. And we had the building inspector, fire chief, town administrator, Jim and I were there, I don't remember if you were there, I think you were, yeah. So that was more focused on overall compliance from the state regulators' perspective of what's what.
I know that the FEMA maps were being, I don't know if you wanna call it improved, I think it covered the town in a, in a bigger flood district. But where I worked previously, we had to make bylaw amendments to adjust for that based on the types of structures that could be allowed in the flood plain. I don't know if that's, you know, if the, if the, the comment from the FEMA administrator for MIPA was that you couldn't have that kind of development or.
She was specifically talking about things like trailers in the floodway, not in the flood plain. So I guess the idea is that FEMA doesn't want to see trailers floating downstream.
Stacked up at the William Dam.
But that, that whole section about, that's in, and that's not erosion and sediment control, that's a different section.
The cynical part of me, you know, I'm here from the federal government here to help you, they're helping us redo the maps so they'll be in a digital format. However, they also claim they're gonna maybe expand the flood plain, the earlier flood plain. And do you think they're looking for more people to be involved to pay into the insurance fund?
There's a lot of advertising on TV about joining the flood programs.
I know. Well, they're running out of money, and so they just want more people to pay into the federal flood insurance program, so. Anyway, okay, so those are the two questions, sometimes we have to define things a little bit more.
Right, and I think floodway, you know, to that point, that you wouldn't necessarily, it probably would rely on the building inspector to determine in the site plan, no, you guys, actually, you guys do the permitting for local homes.
Well, we have a section on local homes.
Not CDA, CDA.
I mean.
But nevertheless, if we're not in compliance according to this woman that was making the presentation, there could be some consequences of the town, so.
And as a practical matter, we know we're not in compliance, because the number of people who have trailers parked by the river is significantly larger than the number of people who have sought permits. And that is something that the building inspector has not made a priority.
Oh, okay, so Rose.
Yeah, I mean, that's an enforcement issue, it's an enforcement issue.
So we, we create the tools.
Right, exactly. Yeah, you wouldn't, based on floodway, you probably wouldn't put any development there, and if that was established in the site plan, assuming that those people would come before whatever board they have to and get a permit, you would establish that, you can't build up there. But if they're plopping themselves in that specific area, that.
It defies the one dwelling per lot, you know, they're clustered five or ten at a time.
Well, okay.
Moving on.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll review this with the goal of taking it up on the twenty-fourth?
So what I can do, and.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
So what I can do is, you know, maybe if you want to come up with a date to submit any comments, I can at least integrate both of these, so that you have all your related definitions in one section with some minimal formatting that makes sense. And then, you know, either at that meeting on the seventeenth, discuss that, we can do that. If, if you, if the board has provided me any comments, you know, in the meantime, or we can.
Ken, I'm just trying to, so I think, if I understand where you're going with this, this is what you pulled from our documents. And this is a template, and you would, the next step would be drop these alphabetically into here, but would you also keep the ones that you haven't crossed out? Ones that might help us, that we haven't already?
Yes.
That's the idea?
Where did this template come from?
This is the template I've been, that I used in.
Oh, so this has nothing to do with Hadley currently?
No.
So I was confused, I thought this is, that's why I was asking questions.
This is, this is Hadley definition.
I'm very slow, when you come in here, you gotta tell us what the hell you wanted from me, okay?
Other than, other than removing the definitions in the template that don't pertain to the Hadley zoning bylaw. So if they don't, if they're not established in the bylaw, in your bylaw, I cross them out. But they're offered as a suggestion if the board wants to maybe establish a definition.
So MS four, we're meeting at one o'clock again, or?
No, eleven.
Eleven o'clock. Eleven AM, right up here.
On the fourth.
On the fourth, okay. So how about if we try to get comments to Kim by the fourth of September? Which would give us the first Tuesday in September to quickly talk about anything we may wanna talk about jointly. And we're gonna put that on agenda to Bill, that'll be good. And then we can get the difference, we can submit what we have to you.
Comes by the fourth.
By the fourth, by the end of, by the end of the day on the fourth, get the comments that we reviewed individually or jointly up to the third to Kim.
Discuss definitions, okay, but we won't need you, we won't expect to see you on the third.
No.
Only on the seventeenth.
And the seventeenth will present definitions and MS four, or you separate them?
Probably, hopefully have both for that day. That'll give us plenty of time, that'll give us some month to schedule the whole public hearing.
So if we, if you have work product for MS four prior to the seventeenth, send it to me and I will share it with town council as early as possible. So as soon as you have what you consider to be at least a polished draft.
Right.
I'd like to get the town council so he can, so they can start going over it.
So I think, just switching back to MS four, I think the way the working group has been looking at this is that there are standards that are currently in your zoning bylaw. But the bylaw itself should be relatively bare bones. A set of regulations would be adopted by presumably the planning board. And that is a, an action by the planning board. I think the town council would help in ensuring that the planning board can act as the, as the authority that can approve those regulations. Because I think that's the outstanding question, whether or not that can happen. But, yeah, we'd be able to, I think, share with the board what that would look like. As far as work product in regards to what goes before the select board, or is that something that you handle or the board handles? Does the, do I create those documents, is there a template? You know, for instance, if, if there's a warrant item led us to rescind the, this form of my law, unless this tried to buy law, does that product come through the board or from your consultant?
It would be, just for consistency, I'd be great, I think you could do it.
Okay.
So that, so we have, and that's a question maybe for town council, if we have one article that repeals section nine dash A, section eleven dash A.
Yeah.
We have to individually repeal the definitions wherever they are, but I think in the same article and substitute therefore section two B or 1B.
Okay.
I don't wanna get into a situation where we're doing, of taking a vote to rescind regulations in a separate vote to, or rescind definitions in a separate vote to create new ones.
Because if one fails, we've got nothing.
Right, right.
So we wanna do, obviously, one, one to cover up that all the bases.
And I think that a council would be very helpful in determining how we can word it. So that, you know, assuming that it does get passed, that you do it in one motion, where you don't.
I'm sure we can do that.
Yeah, the way it used to be done is you present the new article first, pass it, and then, oh, by the way, now we gotta rescind the old one.
Yeah.
So you.
Yeah, we could do that, if we, if we can't do it in one motion, depending on how, depending on how complex the motion would be.
Right.
Ah, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it would be a rescission of the entire zoning bylaw in regards to that, because your end goal is to adopt general bylaw.
For that one, for the, for the, for the MS four, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, for the definitions, it could get.
Right, no.
It could get very messy.
You're right.
So somebody will come up.
You know, for the MS four, it would be a bit more clear, because you're, so you've got, you've got a general and a zone, you're gonna amend one.
Right.
You're gonna amend both by one making one very brief and one very complex, more complex.
Right.
But it is, we have to do.
What is the goal or the purpose of the presentation on the seventeenth? That is to present to us for our review, or is it also for our constituents to? I mean, are we already signed off on it after the third?
No, 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 the third is, the third has nothing to do with anything.
The third is when we've.
The third is, the third is a comment that we, on the, on the meeting, on our planning board meeting on the third, we will take our comments on the definitions, talk about them, and get them to Kim by the end of the day on the fourth.
Okay.
Whatever they may be.
Right.
He will then incorporate, and he will return at least by the seventeenth with a amended definition section based on our comments.
Could we get them ahead of time, like Friday the thirteenth or seventeenth?
You can't really have them available, yes, yes, that would be the goal, to have them emailed to us.
Yeah, so we can review them and not be like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and look at them. And depending on what we have on the seventeenth, it's either going to be, yeah, we like it, or, well, we're not gonna be ready for town meeting on the fall. The definitions section is not a, we want, don't get me wrong, but it's not drop dead that we have to have it for the fall.
No, no.
MS four, a different story.
Right.
Okay, MS four is a higher priority, we have to get it done. Okay, definition, we've been working on now for.
Well, it's been on probably seven, eight years?
Yes, so if we miss it by six months, I'm not gonna say, let's go with it because we want something, let's make sure it's at least good, good and ready before we pull the trigger. MS four is a different story, like I said, that's a, we're, we're, we're not under the gun yet, you could do it in May, but it would really, really be pushing the limit.
I guess my point is, I'm just trying to, you know, being the newest guy on the board, I remember when we, and you had the, I think it was the marijuana rules, and there was a gentleman from the public that would sit in the front row, and he had been reviewing them, and he would have his comments at each meeting.
Yeah.
That could be happening with MS four and could be happening with definitions, right? It's open to the public if they want to, it's not so much on their radar.
Right, right.
But, but if they wanted to, they could be.
Absolutely, but I, but you're not gonna get the, you're not gonna get the end of the resign MS four, because it's real, lack of better term, nebulous to most people. Definition is kind of like, it's already there, we're not changing the world, we're just kind of defining it, putting it in ones from multiple areas into one.
Making our document easier to use, right.
It's a bit, it's a bit more clearer, but we also wanna make sure that we do it properly, you know.
Just to get it right, what I called, I said, in the future, it'd be very helpful to get these things before the meeting.
No, I.
Tell us what they are, and what, if anything, you want us to do regarding these documents when we get to the meeting, what should we prepare to do, because, you know.
Consider us a bunch of dummies.
Yeah, consider us a dummy, we don't, I know what the dummies are.
Okay.
More than twenty-four hours, please.
Yes, definitely, and, you know, noted for the version to be delivered by the thirteenth, so. You know, understanding that I was coming before the board today, I, you know, was, the product finally got done with, with the rest of my work plan that I was able to at least share before the meeting, rather than, you know.
The key is, tell us what, if anything, we should be prepared to do relative to the documents that you gave us, anything, okay?
Which you kind of did with your, with your comments in the sidebar, but I guess a general. And there's no lashing to, we're just saying, how we could improve this process.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
You know, I note that you put the data at the bottom, thank you.
Yeah.
Your questions are still filled.
It helps us track.
Other people don't do that, they don't like to sign them either.
Yeah, I did appreciate it, I have, I may have already mentioned it, the, the historic work programs you set. That was very helpful, this, we may wanna talk about that at some point, I said, I think I set those around to everyone. So that, that work program that's at the back of each contract, what we're gonna work on this year?
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
And.
What was done, what's been accomplished?
And what hasn't been accomplished, so there's some leftovers from three, four, five, six years ago that, oh, yeah, that was a good idea. I'll send that around again, is that maybe something we would wanna discuss?
Remember that, but I didn't, again, I didn't know what it was for.
Yeah, I'm on the planning board, to the CPA, who was supposed to get a booklet, and we never quite accomplished it, so.
Okay.
See where that one is.
Is that like a permitting guide?
Pardon?
The, for the, so.
Just the policies.
Yeah, there's some things that, and we, we never really adopted a set of planning board general regulations. There are a lot of things that we find ourselves repeating to every applicant who comes in.
Sure.
And there are some concepts we have, like reserved parking, which means you, if you have the space, but you don't need the space, we don't care if you don't pave the space.
Okay.
So if you have a forty square foot, forty thousand square foot building that has ten employees, you do not need two acres of asphalt. We don't require that you do two acres of asphalt, but that's never been written down anywhere.
Would that be in the checklist that you were assigning to me?
It could be, but I think that, that, there, there are some things, yeah, the permitting guide, I think, was something that we were working on for a while, and I pulled up copies of, you know, some, Springfield has a, a set of fairly detailed, step-by-step, how do you, how do you open a barbershop?
Okay.
What, you have to go to this board, you have to go to that board. There are things we've just haven't gotten to. The ZBA, I just checked that today, has a, their application is online, and it has like four pages of instructions. I'm filling out a one-page application, but a lot of it is sort of boilerplate about what we are, what we do, when we meet.
Okay.
But, these are all things that'd be nice to, nice to have. Make, make the new guys experience less.
I'm going to.
Like a hazing.
If I can jump in, your example that you just gave about the reserved parking, I think I'm, I'm getting where that came from. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking if, if I come in and I build a big building with low intensity, you say, we want two-for-one, but you can, this much can be reserved, it's really not needed now. But if I then turn around and sell it to someone who uses the same building with, with a higher intensity, now, now it has to be paved.
Correct.
And the space is there.
Exactly.
He can't say it's a hardship, I don't have room for it, no, because it's reserved.
Correct.
Got it.
But can we require that he pave it at that point, or somebody else?
Well, in a different view, if he doesn't have enough.
It would be, it would, under change of view, somebody coming, but let's say, the best example was where this came from originally. Somebody wanted to put up an industrial building that was eighty thou, sixty thou, I think it was sixty thousand square feet. And he was going to require six acres of parking. He had, he had the space, and he had twenty-five employees. He needed less than an acre of parking because he has no visitors. And, he's like, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to pave all this because it's expensive, and I don't need it. I got a snow pile and everything else, that's where, that's where the reserve parking came up.
And the environment, it's not good for the environment.
And all, all of those things.
Yeah.
The building was never built because the project fell through. But if the building was built, industrial use, somebody comes along down a road, they got sixty thousand square foot, they could turn it into a, outland, let's say a sixty thousand square foot restaurant, I mean, obviously it'd be massive. But now, they would need that much parking because of customer base.
Or a shopping store or something, right?
Something like that, or a store, retail, whatever it would be. It's there.
It's reserved.
It's been properly designed, you could, the, the system can handle it. But if you don't need to pave it, you don't need to. If you need to pave it, you could pave it in a heartbeat.
That's a good question, Mark, because many people want us to change the parking regulations only for that use of that particular building that's coming in. But, an AutoZone store becomes Echelon Cafe, which obviously uses, so, we, we need to have that.
We've had a few incidents where uses have changed from exactly where your comment was, a low intensity to a much higher intensity parking, wasn't needed, now it is needed.
Can I down railroad street tonight about nine-thirty?
Isn't that amazing?
What's that, quarters?
Quarters, yes.
They're parked up and down the street.
Who doesn't? Unbelievable.
I had similar.
Well, the climbing wall was another one, I said, oh, I don't know.
They're adding, they're adding, they, they add, doubled the size of the building, and now they're doubling, or quadrupling the size of the parking.
I think I was at that meeting.
Yeah.
And you had like overflow parking and unpaid, it was unpaid.
Yeah.
They, they have all kinds of specials, I know my, I, I know somebody lives in New York, and they'll come here special for the climbing wall on Saturday mornings for kids, because little kids can climb special walls that are designed for, I think, up to like six years old. And, I mean, it's first grade exercise for the kids, don't get me wrong, and they absolutely have a blast doing it.
I used to climb a bank going down a meadow, you have to go up and hold on, same, same thing, no cost.
So, yeah. But anyways.
Take that as felony.
Okay, so, thank you, Ken. I'm, thank you, we're very, very pleased with your, with the work that you're helping us with. And, we'll see you on the seventeen.
Yes.
But actually, I'll see you on the fourth.
I'll see you on the fourth.
Okay? Gentlemen.
How are you?
Go on, how are you?
Jack.
You're up next, what do you got?
I'll stay here.
No, my, my support is not coming with me.
He doesn't need support.
We don't need support?
He needs his glasses, but he doesn't need support.
I'm gonna.
There you go. They're ladies glasses, okay.
I'm listening, Bill, I recognize your voice.
I'm Mark.
Oh, it's still Mark?
I'm Bill.
He has his glasses on.
I got my glasses on. Unfortunately, I don't have your pictures right now on, I know there's going to be five of you guys.
I know, I think this is how it's got, so, you live it?
We're looking at renting a space in front of the Hampshire mosque. Right now, it has been vacant for the last, I think, few years.
Oh, the, the old mountain?
Outfitters.
Outfitters, yeah.
Yeah. I know, I, I talked to Bill briefly, I guess parking was a concern with this, so we're, we own two escape rooms in Connecticut right now. We're looking at doing a third up here in the, the Haver area. So right now, it's the best space that we have found so far to date. We are going to be putting two escape rooms in, and then a VR, virtual reality, goggles, headsets, and things of that nature on the other side. Right now, based on what the mosque is able to give us, it's sixteen dedicated spaces. I think the biggest concern was this overflow and parking issues.
How many, sixteen, you said?
Sixteen.
Is it one-six?
One-six, yeah. We've got sixteen dedicated spaces, obviously, on the nights, the mosque, their busiest times are Fridays, Friday prayers. They also have some busy times, obviously, during Ramadan, and their dinners, and things of that nature. Obviously, when they're not there, we are able to use some of the overflow parking lot, but, for the most part, you know, we are a by appointment facility with the two rooms. We stagger the rooms in half-hour intervals, like, like the sheet says. So for argument's sake, we start one room at eleven o'clock. For the most part, most people, most cars come with one, in one car, maybe two, usually families or people all coming out. So we may have two cars there initially, half hour later, we get the next group coming in, each room is an hour, so we do have some overlap. But for the most part, the sixteen parking spots is plenty compared to where we're at.
Yeah.
Yeah, for where we are in Connecticut right now, as these people are coming, we have a half-hour reset, we don't anticipate even needing the sixteen that we currently have. For the most part, the most amount of people we can have in our rooms at one time, between the two escape rooms and the VR, eight, eight, six, what's that, twenty-two to twenty-four people would be the most that we could usually have at any one given time. And again, that's going to be staggered based on our appointment schedules. So I think that was ultimately the, the biggest concern. I think that you were saying at the conferences we had, that you've had some inquiries in regards to some site plans for, I think it was the Halal Butcher, and some other things. So right now, just trying to get some input from you.
This, the same building the mosque is in?
It is, the mosque is in the back, there is thirty-six hundred square feet out in front, and we're taking, we would take the entire thirty-six hundred square feet.
So that was supposed to be a, a, you know.
Halal Butcher, yep. Yeah, they decided not to go again, and for whatever reason, I'm not sure the reasoning is behind not putting that in there, but, yeah, that was abandoned. I think that was something that the congregation was going to.
So in effect, we have approved the site plan, it's just a matter of.
What, what's going to go in there?
What's going to go in there?
Yeah, I mean, and, and the site has to, I mean, you're going to be limited by your parking space, and so on, like. I mean, you rent a college area.
Yeah.
Some days you'll get a couple of cars that'll bring everybody in, some days you'll probably get ten cars with one person a car.
Right.
And something you're going to have to learn to deal with on your site, because you can't park on a neighbor's.
Correct.
And, it, it's, it, it'll be something you're going to deal with, however you deal with it.
Correct, and, and we're, we're prepared to deal with that, as I said, for the most part. I mean, we're not a shopping center where someone comes in and spends two hours, kind of perusing through whatever they're going to find to buy. They have an hour, or games are an hour long. In the VR, people will rent that space for ten minutes, it could be a half hour, it could be an hour. Once they're done, there's not loitering, there's not people hanging out, they're done, they're gone, and then they, they. So it's not as if they could spend three hours, I mean, they could, they're, they're going to be there three hours, they're going to have that space booked out, no new people are going to be coming in to occupy that time.
This, this is a curious, curiosity question, has nothing to do with the zoning. How do the escape rooms work?
Escape rooms, they're, they are themed base rooms. We have a prison one right now, we have a dragon, kind of a castle medieval, Harry Potter-ish, I can't really, type, type of escape. People come in, they're solving puzzles, they may quote-unquote be locked in specific rooms, like our prison ones do have, you know, closing cell doors, they're magnetic locks, obviously, we have safety mechanisms and safety features to make sure that if anyone does need to get out, they hit buttons, all the magnetic locks will get released, all, everything opens up, doors open up. But yeah, it's, it's kind of a cultural phenomenon right now, everyone, they're gaining in popularity.
So it's a group effort to solve a puzzle to get out?
Hundred percent.
Okay, so a group effort, so they solve the puzzle, they get a door open, there's, it, does it like a successive doors, or what?
We have rooms that have multiple rooms, we have rooms that have multiple key rooms, where they might not be aware, they solve something, they put something somewhere, they put a torch up and a torch holder, and another roommate open up. So it has a, it's a very, it's, it's the opposite of what we do now with our phones and internet. We allow people to unplug for an hour, we allow people to interact with each other, a lot of laughing, a lot of fun.
Where do they start? Are we doing?
Oh, God, no, they started in, in Europe.
Europe.
Japan, actually, Japan was one of the first ones, and in Europe, it really took off in Europe. If you do any research, probably heard about the big Poland accident, there was an accident in Poland with some of the escape rooms, where some people died. They were putting escape rooms in homes, it wasn't a commercial space at all, it wasn't regulated in Poland at all, so. There are, I mean, obviously horror stories or anything, you can go to the fire in Rhode Island years ago, and, but again, so, totally unregulated, highly popular now in, in America. They're gaining in popularity, we've opened two in Connecticut, one in Weathersfield and East Haven. Really attracted to this environment, we're looking at Northampton for a while, we love the proximity to the school.
Actually, it sounds like something that you're going to really hit off with the college.
Oh, I can imagine.
With ten thousand new students a year, I mean, you, you get one group in, and you got ten thousand new students, so our rooms won't become stale. We'll have a less need to re, put new ones in, because we're going to constantly have a, a new base.
Yeah, changing.
So what, changes, no external changes, sign?
Just.
Signage, we have, there's an existing sign out, obviously, we'll work with the, the town to get signs approved.
Externally eliminated.
Yep, there's a, I know there's one there now, I don't know if there's electricity to it, but we will make sure that it's.
Sure, so are these rooms prefab, you just bring them in, you bill them right there?
We have contractors that do this for a living, so, third, we have one right now. Goal is, is to be open for the two escape rooms in January, our VR is set to go. So if we got going, to where space is set up right now, we could probably, under a partial CO, open half the space while waiting for the rest of the rooms to be developed. And so our goal is really to hopefully get maybe open by October, barring, you know, time, time is the biggest.
It's just some kind of like a command room that's able to monitor and make sure no one's, you know, pet.
Yeah, the biggest thing with the escape rooms is, is to make sure the experience is as enjoyable as possible to all of our guests, and to have the same experiences, that, you know, we, you have different levels of, of expert being expert. We have people who do hundreds of these rooms a year, or have done hundreds of rooms, and novices. And we get clues, we have to monitor, so we've got cameras in there, we've got headsets, we're listening in for verbal clues. That's also our way of giving them clues as they get started.
Any age limits as to?
Well, we generally know, we require anyone with minor children to come in and play with them, and or at least be there. I mean, obviously, if we have a sixteen-year-old, we're not necessarily, we have waivers and online forums, and people are aware that, you know, some of them, some of the, I mean, there's some falling in some tight spaces and things like that, they, they might have to get underneath and, and get something. So they're obviously going to have to be able to do those things, no different than the rock wall. Certain people who aren't going to be able to do the rock wall climbing, to certain people who obviously aren't going to be able to necessarily do this. You can't bend over, you can't, but, for, for, some of them are definitely going to be more adult in the base too, but, again, no different than movies and things of that nature, not a major concern with, with ages.
So I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval for Lars Labyrinth at four fifty-one Russell Street. Further review of signage is required.
Who's requesting this, are you the president of a corporation, or are you?
No, I'm just a small business owner.
Doing business as?
Oh, it's definitely, it's Lars Labyrinth LLC.
Oh, okay.
Is it a franchise or something?
No, no, I mean, we purchase existing companies that do these existing rooms, and, but we're not a franchise. We're, obviously, we're in Connecticut now, so Lars Labyrinth LLC is a new LLC in Mass. But, no, we are not a franchise.
I second Bill's motion.
Just sit in here, I'm already feeling claustrophobic.
We, we get that, a lot of people will come and say, hey, are you locking us up? And, and for the most part, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, we've had, I've had two in almost a year now, not want to stay in a room, one was a ten-year-old boy, and another one was a girl with, didn't speak English whatsoever, came here, got dragged in by her boyfriend, and she sat in the corner like this the entire time, finally, they let her. For the most part, nobody has ever gotten worried at all, or nervous about being, you know. You can get into a bathroom on an airplane, for a couple of minutes, you'll survive, you'll survive.
Once you get into solving the puzzle, that is the focus. I did that with, Linda and I did that with our son in New York City. Not only was it an escape room, it was in the third sub-basement of the building. So, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we've been motion in a second to waive for the site plan review, but to come back to us with a sign when you're ready with a sign. Okay, and signage is just a matter of coming in here like you're tonight, yes, we approve it, and you're good to go. Okay? Motion, all in favor of the motion, signify, aye?
Aye.
And you vote, motion is unanimous, you're all set.
Awesome, awesome.
I will give Tim a copy of this, I'll make a copy, put it in his mailbox, and he can go to me tomorrow.
Right, right, okay, that allows us to then start throwing out some permits and applications.
Well, you're going to, I'm assuming you've got, it would sound like you've got a fair amount of construction to do in this place.
Oddly enough, the way they've got split down the middle, yeah, I mean, we have not a lot of framing. Some framing, some extra drywall, half the space is already perfect, so I'd probably say two or three days of framing and, and other.
Okay.
It's not, it's really minor, what we're looking to do, so.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
What's pulling in at the old manies there?
They, it looks like they're dividing it into two sections, a seven-four, three, three, four. Good night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks again.
Yeah, because we went by yesterday, but the, the whole foot is torn off, so it looks like they've got a, a wall down the middle, it's going to be two different spaces.
They haven't come before us?
Yes, they did, they came, they came before us and let us know what they wanted to do.
Okay.
And it's already got the site plan approval, so all they're going to come do, they'd only have to come back to us when they have tenants.
Yeah.
And signage. Okay, Mr. Go, I have nothing else.
Okay, so this is the proposal from the town administrator for a development protocol. And the, I had written to, you had written to him with a comment about the timing.
Right.
And I wrote to him about it with a comment about the, he said that all of the comments of the other boards will be attached to the planning board decision, and I. And I wrote to him, I think I copied you one, and I said that that just isn't feasible because everybody's appellate route from an action of a board is different and I'm writing a decision to satisfy the zoning bylaw and I'm not proposing to add everything else.
Right, I see that he's left that in.
He left that in, so, um, I'm just gonna say it's not ready to sign, he's been away, so...
Also, the historical commission has kind of decided not to want to be on the review section of this anymore.
Right, but they are in the bylaw.
Oh, they're in the bylaw, that's right.
So they, that would have to be amended to, uh... But anyway, I, I'd say it's not ready to sign.
Yeah, 'cause it's not reasonable, I mean, some of their things don't make, like the fire department and police and consta- those last three, they typically issue specific things to their departments, at least the conservation and fire department. They review something entirely different than zoning.
Right, well, they should look at, you, you gave them a copy.
They, they got a copy of the plan.
But the, uh, the dental office where the driveway wasn't sufficiently at a turning radius, not able to accommodate the bigger fire truck, they missed it, and yet they wanted to tear it up.
Yes.
So that's not the...
Well, they know, what, what... There's two different things here. They should review it, the, the, the fire department should review it from that sense, but they also have the second review of fire safety, real, you know, fire alarms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that has nothing to do with us. And we, we gotta be smart on what... The way this is written, it sounds like there, we should be putting all of this stuff in the zoning bylaw and, 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 and the zoning, and the, and zoning, and the planning board site plan approval. Some of it does make sense, like the driveways. And I, and I told, asked the fire department, let us know what you want for certain things on plot design. We can make sure that driveways and stuff like that comply with what you need for fire truck turning radiuses.
Okay, it, that's, we discussed it a little bit last time. I was unaware that, uh, the town administrator was gonna get involved and I thought we should have a checklist and Bill kind of assigned me the checklist and, uh, so, uh... Okay, we're, we're all in the same part. We wanna make sure that it's convenient, we wanna make sure that it's expedited, and I still think our process of going through, uh, the permitting process is probably half of any other town as far as the timeline is concerned. So I don't think we should get a heartburn over it because somebody said there's the delay, there's usually a reason for the delay.
Right, and, and all I'm saying is the fire department needs a certain radius and certain widths for the fire trucks. Well, if we make that known to our reviewing engineers, they can add that to the review process. It's not a big deal, it's not a lot of stuff, okay? Not for us, you know, we can, we can, we have, you know, Berkshire and Hashmont or whatever, when you do the review, in addition to the zoning bylaw, make sure these two things are met. They're not a lot, we're not asking to review the fire design or anything else, just the driveway design to make sure a truck can go. You know, I doubt the police department's gonna have a lot, lot of comments as far as site plan.
Well, I didn't think the Board of Health had a lot of input, but I met with them last Tuesday to see if they wanted that big package and they said, most of the time it goes because it's connected with sewer, the larger building.
Right.
However, if there's any eating, kitchen, et cetera, et cetera, they would like to know about it, so still send us the, your copy.
They'll, they'll still get a copy.
Okay.
A building effect, I, I give it to Tim and he makes general comments, uh, relative to the zoning stuff, so his comments are gonna be pretty easy to incorporate. I just wanna make sure it's clear that the comments that these boards are gonna give to us, they give it to us in time, we, we knew ahead of time, it's, a lot of them is cook, is, is, is standard. The fire department needs a certain radius and certain width driveway. That's not something that's gonna be difficult to have the zoning, the engineering, the reviewing engineer incorporate, 'cause it should be pretty consistent.
But can we list everything? I mean, Bill brought up a good point, that Subaru wants to use nearby garage owned by Echelon now. Where is the curb cut? You're right, Bill, they, there's no indication of where the curb cut is supposed to be and that's their responsibility.
Yeah, so that, that thing, but the thing that Gip said, that everybody has a different basis, I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna attach the entire conservation commission order condition.
Exactly correct.
Correct. And nothing we say in site plan approval has any weight.
On the kitchen.
On the conservation commission or the wetlands, uh, Wetlands Protection Act. Uh, if, if the applicant comes in and says he wants to put the building right in the middle and that is a wetlands, we're gonna approve it from our end, from a zoning end, but we may tell him, he hasn't, it's not gonna get through conservation and then you're gonna have to come back. But, um, I think you just wanna keep it simple. I, I do appreciate that they're trying to just help keep things running smoothly here.
Yeah.
But it is, uh, it's just some technical things that maybe are...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we just... We wanna, you know, because... Or a pen, each department, I mean, we just wanna make sure that what everybody's requesting is reasonable for the zone, all we can do is put zoning items in the decision.
Yeah, if somebody comes in, we've got a comment back from fire department that is zoning related, we, we will try to include it as a condition. And I am rewriting my standard conditions to make it clearer that this is, um, solely a zoning determination, um...
Well, as you said, our decision is subject to other boards' approval.
Yeah.
So are we trying to change that?
No, no, we're trying to, we're not trying to change, we're trying to hit them over the head with a much bigger hammer to make them aware of that.
So one of the, one of the biggest complaints has been that someone will get through site plan approval, uh, of all these lovely drawings and renderings, and then, uh, they find out what the sewer impact fee is from DPW. Even though the decision explicitly says, subject to other boards' approval if and as required, including, I think I have sewer department, this is not permission to tie into the sewer line. But people, Marlowe was dealing with this, prior DPW director, he complained that people were coming down and saying, but I have site plan approval. And I pointed him to that language, but apparently, nobody reads the fifth page.
Yeah, and, and maybe they put that, put those kind of comments in the front page. To make it...
Well, it's, it's up, my point too, it's up to us to be aware, look, you've gotta check with the, uh, if you want a curb cut on Route Nine, you better check with the, uh, State Highway Department or with the sewer, gotta check with Marlowe.
So that's...
Just a look for.
So, Mark, you haven't seen this and Mike, you haven't seen it all that much, but we get people coming in who say, well, I have a driveway on Route Nine. Uh, well, yeah, you have a driveway, but you don't have a commercial driveway for Mass, Mass Highway and, um...
There's a difference.
I have three driveways on Route Nine for my business, yeah, but you're not, business is not going to get three driveways. Your house may have had three driveways, but, uh, so it's just a piece of the regulatory merry-go-round that, uh, so, some people are on top of it, some just...
But your design, a group like that, they know. It's generally when you're dealing with amateur hour.
Yeah, the, the bigger one, the bigger they are typically, the more aware they are of those things. It's the small mom and pop where you run into the troubles and we also, we don't want to punish the small mom and pops by not making them aware that you also need these things.
So it's, it's ones who, it's their first rodeo and they don't realize that, that this isn't one-stop shopping.
Yeah. Yeah, or they've been, or they've got a place in some, you know, out, out who knows where, not around here, and it was one-stop shopping for whatever reason. Well, here it is not, it is multiple stops.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anything else?
I do not have, uh, let's see, uh...
You're the gentleman?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't...
I don't think, there's no need for executive session tonight.
Right. They are, the lawsuit will be defended by the, uh, defendant. He's hired an attorney and they're going forward and it is up to them.
The building, I think.
They're, they're, they are...
Proceeding at their own risk.
Proceeding at their own risk. And, I mean, he's well aware that when Route Nine expansion comes in, he's going to, uh, be in tough condition with his place on Route Nine. I mean, he, he can try to argue that one, but...
No, they're, they're taking it.
That's, that's gonna be a tough one to, to do anything, but, you know, get, he's gonna be, all he can be able to do is negotiate his money. But as far as losing it, it's ninety-nine and nine-tens for sure is going.
As of the twenty-five percent design, that property is the only one that is being taken in full.
Right. If the one across the street isn't being taken in full, but what's gonna be, where's going to be built, I think there's about a, what, an inch or two between the right of way and the edge of the, of the building?
It's gonna be like having a drive-through window.
Yeah, right, right, right at, uh, the whole side of your house.
Who owns that? Across the street from him?
The, the green, the, the green, uh...
The one that's kitty-cornered to the post office?
Yeah, yeah, yes. The one that just put new siding on this past year.
Valley Building Company, it's a, it's a commercial rental.
Uh-huh.
That's not the one that has earthworms out back or something, that's somebody else.
I'm not sure. Well, I know that they didn't put, they didn't put siding on the back part of the building because the back part of the building is already in the Route Nine right of way.
Could they, could they legally take, take the Hadley Town Hall? I mean, not, not right now, but in fifty years, 'cause they say that we need this.
Probably.
Yeah.
When they put the bullet train through?
Extra second bike path or a bike lane.
The dummy train.
Okay, uh, is it September? Oh, no, this is August, September, we have to sign the next paperwork, okay, we're gonna meet you. I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
So, all in favor?
Aye.